to do all this stuff. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order if I could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. All right. First, we need adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gerald, second by Larry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. We don't have any minutes for your considerations, so moving on to comments of citizens. Are there any citizens that would like to make any comments for anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, I want to rush through this. Okay.
Someone would want to talk about the water.
Well, I'm going to go ahead now and try to get our other participant who is participating by Zoom. I'll go ahead and see if I can get her logged in. I will ask that I try to be somewhat quiet because it is hard to, oh, she's waiting, hard to hear her. I've got it as loud as I could. I tested it. At least Connie's was. Maybe she just didn't talk as loud. All right, Scarlett, are you there? I heard a noise. Hi Scarlett, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, can you all hear her out there somewhat? Hopefully, it's the best I can get you. I'm sorry if you can't. We just got started, so we are moving down to new business now, which is the potential multifamily housing development. And I'm going to go ahead and start first with the PowerPoint presentation, Scarlett, and then we'll follow up with questions after that. And if somebody has a question in the middle of it about a particular slide or something, let me know, Scarlett. I know you can't see the PowerPoint presentation really on your end. I don't think you can. No?
Kind of horrible.
That's okay, Mayor. I have a draft version that I can follow you on, and just let me know if there are questions.
Actually, I might be able to. I'm trying to remember how, okay. Yeah, just try to follow through. I haven't done Zoom for a minute, so I was trying to figure out how to, how to do it. So, I've got everything loaded up. Give this just a second.
He's going to move so he can see.
Mike, can you want to move over so you can see it better? Can you see it at your angle? All right. Make sure I got everything looking like I want it. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and switch the screen. So anybody that's watching our recording or our video later, they can follow along with the PowerPoint presentation. So the Swiss District River Bend on Main is a multifamily housing project that myself, along with Aaron Emerson with PCC, have been working on for probably close to six, maybe eight months now, off and on. And we're very excited now to present this project to the council for consideration this evening. Okay, so as we go over this here, let me skip on that. When we talk about this, the Swiss District, we're talking about an area, Washington Street over to where Swiss Plywood was. And mainly, we're going to be focusing on the Swiss Plywood site. It's two city blocks there roughly with an alley that's been vacated between the two. As you can see in this slide here, that is what Swiss Plywood was once like as far as the full, the building in its entirety. And as time went on, when Swiss Plywood closed, the port ended up with the building after an owner in between there. And they developed several plans for the building, everything from a commercial kitchen to multi-use office space, incubator space, event center, and so forth. However, as many of you probably remember, in December of 2019, the west part of the building, and even on the west side of the alley, part of the building, had burned with a fire, probably the worst fire in the city's history, if not the second, but probably the worst. And many of you probably remember sitting there and standing there on the corner, watching this building burn. As you've ever watched it burn, many of us who had high hopes for that area watched our vision and our ideas go up in smoke. But knowing that we would get together one day and come up with a new vision for this area. And a phoenix rising from the ashes. So quickly, they got together and came up with another idea for what was the remaining part of the building. So this is basically on the Ninth Street side. In this picture here, it actually shows where the vacated alley would be. So this vast could be facing the flood while this portion of Swiss Plywood. And they had a lot of great ideas with it. And you can see here, there were some renderings done at the inside of an event space and more incubator type offices and so forth. And here's just a little quick video to show you. I'll let you just take a moment to look at that. But this building has had a lot of opportunity for different usages. And it's important to keep in mind that what this building becomes is also going to be a great partner with what is to come on the other side of it, which I will be talking about later. This was one concept that was proposed, and it was more of an event space. So rather than it being on the main street side, they just shifted the event space to the Ninth Street side. And you can see here that it would have held 100, 200-plus people probably in this space here. Their plan was to remove some of the second flooring and so forth that would have allowed that. But as time goes on, things change, and the port was approached about selling the building, and that's another slide coming up later. So I just want to talk now about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was adopted in April of 2022. It was made up of several community leaders, from council members to regular citizens to county officials and so forth, that served on this. And we hadn't had a comprehensive plan updated since 2011, maybe 12, I think, 13? It's been a while. I look at Larry because Larry's good at remembering dates.
I don't remember that.
But there's a lot of key information in this comprehensive plan. And as you look at that, the current housing. Now, keep in mind, this was back in 2022. And a lot's changed since 2022 as far as building materials. The housing market since 2022 and so forth has really changed. But when they started doing this, this is actually from 2020. So even more has changed since then. We went through a global pandemic and so forth. It shows owner-occupied housing units in 2020 were 63.5%. And if you go over to the next column where it says, one, existing conditions, Tel City, the median household value is assessed at $106,700. And the median rent in 2020 was $522. Well, you really don't see rent $522 anymore. That's significantly higher. And population. One thing that I find is a plus for Tel City is we actually saw a 3.2% increase in our population based off the census of 2020. We went from 7,272 people to 7,506. And I will tell you, I am very proud of that. And we want to continue growth in Tel City and the community. Income. In 2020, the median household income in 2020 for Tel City residents was $44,514, with a per capita income of $25,024. I can send you a population stat if you really want to see it. Housing. A vision and key goals. Goal six was housing that come out of our comprehensive plan. Incentivize housing developments and renovations of existing structures which offer a variety of styles to fit the demands of Tel City's current and future residents. Now, we start talking about the Swiss District just a little bit here. Land use and a key goals. If you look to the right of this, you'll see what's Washington Street all the way up to kind of Gutenberg. That is the Swiss District that was outlined in the comprehensive plan. And if you look there where there's that number three, that little icon that's kind of dropped down there, that's the Swiss Plywood building. Just on the other side of that, towards Main Street, you'll see a parking lot and what's a green little block there. Basically, what we're going to be doing in this concept and going to propose here shortly is flip those two. The parking lot's going to go where that corner was. It's still standing. It has the flood levels. And that green space is going to go over there for the proposed development. Now, I cannot see this on my PowerPoint, but I do want to try to read this to you all if I can. Well, hopefully you can see it out there because my PowerPoint erased it when I highlighted it, so I can't really see that on here. But it's a whole, no, no, no. Unique history and concept, but it's basically trying to revitalize that area, looking at housing and so forth. The next slide. This again talks more about the Swiss Plywood District. And it's located in the southern edge of Main Street. The Swiss Plywood District is home to the old Swiss Plywood factory and stands as a reminder of the city's unique industrial past. This area has started to see new reinvestment in residential properties and could become an anchor to the downtown if a private investment continues. Improvements to the streets, gates, cleanup properties within the district is an important step in bringing investment back into southern end of Main Street. Also in our comprehensive plan, it stated what land use and redevelopment incentives should be a priority for Tel City. Number six, redevelopment of the Swiss Plywood property, which would include the building that we talked about earlier and also the part that burnt because that is the Swiss Plywood property. Next, you say what types of housing developments does Tel City need or needs more? Number one, affordable housing options, 64.7% ask for that. You go down to number four, apartments, 48.7. And if you look down, I actually copied a comment that was made on our city's Facebook page from Jenny Brunner. She's Detroit Township trustee. The potential multifamily housing development sounds exciting. We do not have enough affordable housing for sure. And she sees a lot of that every day as well. As we talk about the development that's taken place in that area, or in the slide before, you notice Habitat Housing. In 2020, the Perry County Habitat Humanity built the first new home in the Swiss District since before the 1960s. Since then, they have built another home with plans for a third. Demolition of blight properties. These next two slides are going to show just some of the blight properties that we've demolished. A lot of them within the last five to 10 years. You can see a number of them up there needed removed. And if I'm thinking right, none of these were removed at the cost of the city. I don't think the city tore any of these down. I think they were, the port did tear some down, so you could say that was some tax arts. I'm not sure they're on that. But the majorities were tore down by either private investments such as the red building there you'll see on the right, and then the modular homes and all those were all tore down, from my knowledge, by private owners. And you'll see again, the former Williams Hotel site at the corner of Washington and Main collapsed out in the street. And again, was tore down. Now, it did take cities' efforts to get that tore down and cleaned up. But the property did tear that down, as well as the other homes in that area. As we look at redevelopment in that area and partnership and revitalizing the old, partnership of Indiana Landmarks. A long-standing relationship with the Indiana Landmarks inspired Tel City leaders to collaborate with them to save the historic house located at 222 Ninth Street in the city's Swiss District. The city acquired the vacant circa 1885 house at the Perry County Commissioners' health in 2022. The city then deeded the property to Indiana Landmarks. Indiana Landmarks invested over $70,000 and repaired the collapsing front porch, removed the luminous siding, repaired the original clapboard, cleaned out the interior, and added a fresh coat of paint to the exterior. Indiana Landmarks now has the house listed of Holland Realty with preservation covenants, returning to the city's tax row, and helping preserve the city, the neighborhood's historic character. And you can see the before and after. It's like night and day difference. Now the exciting part, River Bend on Main. This is a teenage investments project. You can kind of get an idea. This is the Main Street elevation. And this is what will be put, if you go to the left of it there, that is the Bloom Street. So it's a corner of Bloom and Main. You can kind of see this is the side that would face the alley and the Gutenberg elevation and the Bloom Street elevation. And this is kind of an aerial view to kind of get your bearings of where it actually is. So if you look at Main Street there at the top of the screen, and Bloom is to the right, it'd be nestled in that corner there. And then remember I told you the parking lot and that space kind of flipped? That kind of explains what I meant by how it flipped. You'll see at the bottom of it, the existing Blitz Artisan Factory. And there's some more maybe on that later, I think I had in here. So what does this entail? It's four stories, as you all can tell from the rendering there. Apartment units. There are 16 one-bedroom, 16 two-bedroom, and eight three-bedroom, 40 units in total. Of those, ADA units included in that 40, there will be one one-bedroom, two two-bedroom, and three three-bedroom, for a total of six ADA. Here are the paired units, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom, for a total of three. So that's still 40, but that's your units. Here's kind of a floor plan, what you'll expect to see. And one of them's the ADA, and one's just your non-ADA units for a one-bedroom floor plan. And then you have your two-bedroom, also your ADA, and your normal floor plan. And your three-bedroom. And the layout of the first floor. You know, it's hard to see some of that from a distance. But you'll see to the right, there's kind of the main lobby for it. That's at Bloom and Main. And there's another one on the far end of it, kind of balancing. That's where the offices will be for the manager and so forth. And I don't know if it shows it on these plans or not. It does. You'll see where there's ADA apartments there in the far right corner, and there's one on the far left, kind of how they're positioned in there. Most of the one-bedrooms are kind of in the middle of this. And it's pretty much copy paste from floor to floor. As you go to the second floor, you'll notice that there's a fitness area. And there's also a community area that have a small kitchenette in it. And it's basically the same floor plan as you go up. And your third floor, you'll see that there is amenities that are blank. Those are to be determined. Could just be a seating area with some tables and so forth, but those could be determined basically, maybe something by the tenants, what they might like to see, or it may grow into something else. There are. Yep, there's two. And the fourth floor, which is your top floor, it's kind of the same as the rest of them. So apartment unit building amenities. Turn to my page here so I can see it better. So the apartment unit amenities will include washer and dryer, built-in dishwasher, micro hoods or microwaves, hardwood tile or luxury vinyl flooring in rooms except the bedrooms, and an individual porch, patio, or balcony. And obviously, you have your stove and refrigerator stuff, but sometimes apartments are furnished, they don't have your washers and dryers or even a built-in dishwasher, but all of these will. Something that's nice pointed out, safety and security. Security cameras at all building entrances will be monitored or recorded. Exterior site and parking area LED lighting. It's going to have the peep holes on the units for the doors and a fire sprinkler system. I would say no. I didn't ask that question, but I'll ask her that in a little bit. Remember that one. Apartment unit and building amenities continued. Common areas, there'll be two elevators, two stairwells, bike racks, picnic area of picnic tables, and a cast iron grill or grills. Community room with a small kitchenette on the second floor, a computer center with high-speed internet, exercise room, second floor, onsite property manager, full or part-time during normal business hours, and other amenities rooms on each floor. And these pictures aren't actually from them. These are just some stock photos, and I cited them, so don't think that's exactly what that's going to look like. We've been working as a city the last couple of months doing the zoning changes. Council approved the zoning change at the last meeting and 1st of July, so, or June, rather. On June 24th, the Tel City Advisory Plan Commission approved a favorable change zoning to this area from seven to zero, resolution number 2024-1. And on July 1st of 2024, the Tel City Common Council approved the change in zoning this area through the five to zero ordinance number 1215. And I believe all of you are familiar with that. Tel City Electric Department. Tel City Electric will be investing around $350,000 into this housing project. It will take four to five years to recoup their investments. Tel City Electric will gain 40 new customers as a result. And Andy, the industry standard is what, five? And you may re-get it in four, maybe?
Yeah, one big key there, and I was just sitting here thinking about it. That's just the housing bill. That's not including any new revenue from the Blitz organization.
Right.
So in reality, it'd be a lot quicker than that.
Everybody hear that?
Because they'll drop each other.
Right. And Tel City Water and wastewater will see roughly $33,108.48 a year. That's estimated. And I've got a form here that Janet filled out to get that number. They will have a four-inch main to feed this building, one meter. That will be part of the sprinkler system. They'll have a backflow preventer valve installed, but that will feed the building. It will not have, each unit will not have its own meter for the city-wise. It will have one large four-inch, which is, a four-inch line is a pretty sizable line. And those other utilities I didn't put in here that you'll see, obviously, PSC, I believe, will be probably their main user as far as installation, or I haven't talked to them on that yet, and other utilities. So the timeline for this. Right now, they have an application that they have to turn in, and it's due July 31st, 2024. The award announcement for that will be in November of 2024, financing closing, summer of 2025. Construction begins fall of 2025, in the opening of the fourth quarter of 2026. All right.
If approved.
If approved.
Competitive funding.
It is competitive funding for tax credits. You're right.
Chris, I know you went through this. Could you give me that unit mix again?
Yes.
The number of one, two, and three bedrooms?
Yep. All right, Scarlett, are you there? Did I lose you?
I am here.
Okay, let me find my mouse here and get it going again so they can see you. Well, not really see you, but they. I told them, there she is. She is broadcasting us live from Scotland, you all. She's visiting. She doesn't live there. She's visiting there. And so it's kind of cool to think that someone from Scotland is visiting and is able to participate remotely. It's impressive. Scarlett, Mike Finley had asked, well, I'm looking for this breakdown here. No smoking in the building is not permitted?
No smoking. Yeah, it's a no-smoking facility. We will make that commitment.
Yeah.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I will be back in Indiana tomorrow, but I appreciate you letting me just make the public.
Yes, we're glad to have you. Do you want to tell a little about who's eligible to live in these units and how does that work?
Absolutely. So the rental housing tax credit program, you apply to the state, to HCD, the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. And the tax credit program limits you to certain income levels in terms of who can rent from these apartments. And so you can choose from a couple of different ways to do that. We are proposing for this project what they call income averaging. And so the total of units, so all 40 units together, the incomes or the rents have to average out to 60% area median income. And so that means we can have units as low as 30% area median income to 80% area median income. And so that's what we will propose to do, and we will have a market study here in the next few days, making some recommendations about how we do it. And that means if you are an applicant to, or someone who wants to live in these apartments, and you submit your application to lease an apartment, there is a income verification process, and we see if you fit into 30%, 50%, 60%, or 80% of the area median income, and therefore you would be eligible for a unit. If you, well, I'll stop there. I guess that's, and if there are any questions, the area median income is set annually by the federal government, and it corresponds to the metropolitan statistical area that Tel City is located in.
I know a lot of us, that's like well above our head to understand that and comprehend. I get that. Larry, he probably understands it because he.
Yeah, I've got a chart.
Larry grew up in that field. Larry was the former president, CEO of Lincolnos Development here in Tel City. He crafted a lot of these programs, was the guy that was, you know, getting things done for that back in the day. And so he knows, he's very knowledgeable. We also have Donna Nance. I know you can't see her out there, but she's out in the audience. She is the director of the Tel City Housing Authority. So she's also extremely, extremely knowledgeable in this stuff. Give you some props, I think. All right.
I think it's, I think it's important to note, I'm sorry, for folks that are watching, just by word, by way of clarity, this is not a traditional HUD housing type of development either. This is, for lack of a better way of putting it, as she explained, it's going to fit in the spectrum of middle-income housing. It is not HUD subsidized type of unit. Nothing against that, but this is a different neighborhood, and we're not proposing a development that's going to be that type of development. So I want to make sure that everybody understands it's subsidized, but it's not HUD.
Okay. Donna had a question. I'm sorry.
Yes, but will they accept HCV vouchers?
Say that again, H what?
HCV vouchers.
Will you accept? Section eight vouchers?
Yes, we will. We do not have a set aside for project-specific vouchers, but if an individual has a voucher, we will accept those.
Thank you, Donna.
One thing I want to point out, working with PCC, they have Whitney Zellers. And she's very knowledgeable in a lot of this. And of the 44 employers that responded to the survey, 33 of them, over 75% have entry-level positions that would start or below the 40K, as Whitney says. So this would help a lot of our employees. You know, if you've got entry level for manufacturing, healthcare facilities, logistics, utilities, commercial retail, local government, school, education staff, et cetera, that will bring to this community and help them find housing. It can be seniors. If Connie sells her house in a couple of years, and she sells her house for whatever, net money's in the checking account, whatever her income is, not the money that's in the checking account, but whatever her income is, she would probably qualify. And that would free up her house for someone that may have a couple of kids or whatever that could live there, bringing more people to the community that would go to our schools and find jobs here. So it's important to point that out.
It is subsidized housing. The difference is that the subsidy goes to the developer to keep, to reduce the construction costs. And therefore, and the rents are controlled also. The rents that they can charge are controlled by, I assume they're adjusted annually, but the rents are controlled. The maximum rents they can charge are controlled.
Right. And let me just kind of touch on that. I'm not trying to dominoes, but I wonder if I have enough information so everybody understands this. This is a letter that Scarlett had sent in, and it's on behalf of Teenage Fest, and I wanted to provide some additional information on the community we have been working on in Tel City. The Hagman family is passionate for rural development, especially near our home base in Indiana. And we want to make sure you have all the details, as this community would want to be part of the new state initiative to bring more high-quality housing to communities like Tel City. It is important to note that we are not proposing section eight housing, or a typical affordable housing community, as you may be familiar with. The city has recognized a pressing need for high-quality housing in rural areas and small towns where current interest rates and construction costs prevent significant borrowers to new development. Consequently, over the past six months, the state has announced its intentions to allocate substantial state and federal funds towards new housing projects in rural communities through various kinds of state and federal tax credits. Given the limited nature of these funds, communities will be competing for allocations. And our team is currently working with five other communities to help win, help them win the funding. Fortunately, our team has a proven track record of securing such funding, and we would love, and we love rural and small-town development. Our proposed community in Tel City will adhere to the highest standards of construction, featuring energy-efficient appliances and premium materials as mandated by the tax credit program. This community also boasts the unique opportunity to construct housing in mixed-use development, including retail, restaurant as part of a greater vision with the local company Blitz Artisan. The momentum of developing housing in mixed-use development at the same time will allow us to leverage our investment in the area, including redevelopment tax and ready funds from the state. In terms, the market rents will be, we will be charging, the anticipated rent for a two-bedroom unit in Tel City would range from $458 to $865, while a three-bedroom unit would range from $973 to $1,110. We have a lot of concerns regarding the upper limit of $1110, and we are prepared to adjust rental rates and align them with the market realities. Based on the program requirements, our market analysis, household-seeking residents, these units would need to have an annual income ranging to $44,220 and $63,100 to qualify. This means a family of four, two children, stay-at-home mom, and a working dad will be able to live in these units comfortably. Last paragraph. I know this is a lot to read for y'all, but we have been successfully, we have been successful in receiving allocations for tax credits for many other projects in Indiana. And I'll be delighted to welcome you to visit one of our communities in the attached resume and see the qualifying construction, property management, and meet some of the residents living there. I think we'd be very impressed and excited to welcome a similar development to Tel City. And that's from Scarlett. One thing that's also important to mention in here is that when you look at the quality of this, this is a little over $14 million project. It's significant. I mean, that's, $14 million hasn't been invested in that area or downtown in quite a while. And, you know, again, this is just affordable housing. This is quality. And, you know, again, this is just affordable housing, this is quality affordable housing, and it's more income-based, I think is a better term, I think what we've used than other terms that have been thrown out there.
Okay, it's new. That's, I think, one thing we got to stress here, the Swiss District, this is a, if this project goes forward, this is a beautiful, brand-new building in the Swiss District. That's something that Tel City hasn't had for 80, 70 years, probably.
Well, one more thing, and I'll let you guys ask as many questions as we can. Teenage Investment will be the property manager for the Tel City property, and Teenage will maintain ownership for a minimum of 15 years, tax credit compliance period. At the end of the 15-year period, we can seek additional tax credits to completely rehab the units and maintain ownership. In the, in the years 1 through 15, we will have the operating, operating reserve to maintain the units. So they will be holding all these long-term. It's not like they're going to come in, build them, and leave Tel City. So I don't want anybody to think, I know that was something that someone said, well, they're just going to build them and leave. They can't. So we got 10 minutes, Scarlett, before I lose you, and I'll have to try to send you a Zoom in back in because I'm too cheap to pay for a Zoom subscription. But what kind of questions does everybody have for Scarlett?
So in each income bracket or whatever, you say like 30, 50, 80, can someone from like the 50 take an apartment from the 30 if no 30s would apply? You know what I mean?
I'll let Scarlett try to answer that. I know what you're trying to say.
I do know what you mean. So we just have to maintain an average of 60% area median income. And so unfortunately, if we do have a renter that is going to, is going to not help us meet that 60% average, we are not going to be able to accept them. And so we do have to try to match people with units that they qualify for. And just like every other apartment building, we won't be able to lease everybody, we will, we will get full at some point, but we will have to maintain that 60% area median income average across the 40 units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Scarlett, I'm passing out this letter, you can kind of share it because I didn't make enough of them, for the city of Tel City's financial support regarding site development located in Tel City. The first half of it talks about the project, 40 units and so forth. When you get down to number three, project, financing, and incentives. The total development cost of this project expects to be approximately $14.15 million. In order to assist the developer in construction of the project, the city would agree if the developer, following, one, assist the developer in obtaining any and all required city permits necessary for the, for the construction of the project. Waive the developer, waive for the developer all building permits, inspections, sewer, and water tap-in with the city's authorization to waive.
The fees.
The fees.
The fees. We're not asking, we're not saying that they're not going to get their permits, they're asking to waive the fees.
Correct. Now, this is not, and I explained this to Scarlett earlier today, this is not waive Tel City Electric's fee for their meter, Andy, right? This is not waive Tel City Electric's, it's $200 for a 200 amp?
No, it's a dollar or eight.
Dollar amp, so if it's 100?
Forty, in 40 units, 200 amps, it's $200.
Eight grand?
Eight thousand.
Eight at worst, okay.
That's what it was.
And three, waive developer for the cost of electricity, which that last sentence there is kind of the cost that Tel City Electric is going to put to put the infrastructure in up there. Their transformers, the underground stuff, so forth. Next is for the tax abatement. The city of Tel City has supported the tax payment with T&amp;H Investment Properties LLC, T&amp;H Investment Management, related to the proposed river bend on main development. After a site has planned, after a site plan has been approved by the city, the developer has been completed, the building in use, basically they're asking for a tax abatement for 10 years, the first year being 100%, then the second year, 90, 80, 70, 60, da-da-da-da-da, down for 10 years.
Most common type.
They still will pay property taxes, even the first year, on the undeveloped land. So the dirt that this building sits on, whatever that's assessed out, they will pay, which won't be a significant amount the first year. But you just will be abating the, and I know there's a whole process they have to follow for abatement that has to, you know, come before and so forth.
And I'm assuming currently we're receiving no taxes off of that?
Currently, we are receiving no taxes, that is correct.
By the port of the regard.
Correct.
Correct.
So we probably got like five minutes. Any questions regarding any of these requests for Scarlett? I mean, I can answer them after, if it kicks you out, like I said, I'll try to get you back on, or I'll call you. Just won't be able to Zoom.
Electric's not going to waive their fee. I don't think we should waive our water and sewer tax fee. Brent tells me that he's not making a dime off this thing, he's just trying to cover his costs to put that line in.
Okay.
So it's about $10,000 or less. This is my, the only income our water and sewer department have is great fees, that's it. We can't use tax dollars, we get no other money.
Except $2.5 million.
Well, we ain't got that yet, but I hope we do.
I just had to say that.
And that's my, that's a question.
Okay.
I was asking.
What did you show as proposed income for water and sewer?
33,000, 33,000, I think, a year? Now, I know it costs us money, that is, you know, to treat and employ, but that's what they're, they would pay that much a year. That'd be their average bill a year, 33,000.
Yeah. I have no problem with waiving the fee with that kind of projected income. When are we going to pick up 40 new residential customers?
Well, we'll gain...
For a $10,000 investment.
Well, not only that, we will actually gain minimum, guessing 80 new people to Tel City potentially, if you figure, you know, although there's some one-bedrooms, that there's twos and threes, but 80 would be nice.
Is it 40 units?
40 units. 10 per floor.
It's usually two per unit, the national average or something.
Yeah. So, I mean, gosh, to increase the community by, hang on, Ron. If you don't have a question for Scarlett, I don't want to lose her.
What about keeping value up? Can we allow animals in there? How about service animals?
He asked if you're allowed to have animals or service animals?
Yes.
To both?
Yes.
And is there probably a limit on the type of dog or something you could have, and how many?
Um, yes, we will have to, I mean, in our property manager, so our property manager will ask that in your application, just similar to any other apartment, they'll ask about animals, do you have animals? You may have to just disclose what animals you have, and if there are any issues with animals, then property management may have to deal with that, certainly if there were any safety issues with animals. But generally speaking, we allow pets, we allow service animals, we're not going to have a fee for pets, and we don't have a limit, but again, if there were an issue with safety or maintenance of the apartment, then we would have to address it with the tenant.
Did you hear that, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know how well it's projecting out there. Now, Donna?
So there is no pet deposits required?
She asked, Donna Nance, she's with the Housing Authority, she asked, there will be no pet deposits required?
No pet deposits.
No? She said no pet deposits. There you go. Generous. I don't know, you don't know Brian Steen on our council, these are like three little Yorkies out here that just, four, oh, he's got four! You've got another one since the last time I think we talked.
The oldest was diaper, so he can't count them.
Oh. Had to have a laugh there. They're good dogs, although. I saw, I saw a picture on Facebook the other day, all lined up, I thought I only saw three. Does anyone have any questions for Scarlett? Like, I can call her back on my phone, just not Zoom, I just don't want to leave this out. So what I'm asking for, this letter is a draft letter, it's not on letterhead, it's, things can be modified. Grammatically, I need to probably review it, and Scarlett, I need to review it, make, Scarlett, I need to review it, make sure punctuation and periods and commas are where they need to be, but...
Chris, I don't have any questions directly for Scarlett, but I've got a question for Donna. Do you, I know you administer the section eight voucher program in Tel City. Do you have a need for more section eight units?
I have a need for more section eight units, but on the split side of that, it helps my section eight program, but it also puts me in a bind with my public housing unit.
Okay. Okay.
Because they, of course, if they're given the option, they're going to move to a new facility that has all the new amenities, as opposed to moving into some of our properties that range from 1950 to 1984.
Sure.
So that's my issue with the whole.
Gotcha. But you are paying administrative fees for a section eight, right?
Yes.
Based on the number of units that you have rented?
How many units do you currently have available?
We have 70 vouchers, and right now we're only utilizing approximately 50 of those.
But how many like apartments are empty, like high-rise, eerie, spring?
Um, our apartments, which is not section eight, those are public housing units.
Right.
Which are subsidized already. We probably have maybe five vacancies right now.
Is that common, five, is that about average?
Um, the high-rise, which is primarily for elderly disabled, I see a lot of turnover there, people are aging out.
Sure. Well, that's, that makes sense.
I don't hear real well. Did you say you have 50 or 15 vouchers out?
We are utilizing 50 of our 70 vouchers.
50 of the 70, okay, thank you.
And I did lose Scarlett, so I'm going to call her. You just won't be able to, you won't be able to see her, that's all.
Hey, ma'am.
All right, I've got you on speakerphone, they just can't see you, that's all.
No problem.
All right.
I think what you're asking for tonight is...
So what I'm asking for, why am I here, what I'm asking for, this is a, this is a big project, and Larry, go ahead.
It is a big project, and I think when we look at tax abatement, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It is a tax abatement, but it's more a tax deferral, because once the abatement wears off over a 10-year period, then we'll have those property taxes coming in.
Absolutely, yes.
And right now, we have nothing coming in off of that property up there.
Yeah.
Gerald, regarding the point you made about the $10,000 or so on the water tenant fees, I don't know how critical that is, and maybe Scarlett can answer this, but I know it's a competitive process. I would hate to see $10,000 be the difference between this project moving forward and not scoring high enough to be funded. I don't know if that $10,000 is that critical or not, but when I was doing projects, I mean, every extra point you could get, I mean, it makes a difference. This is a competitive process, and maybe it was because I wasn't a good developer, but I had more tax credit project applications denied than I ever had approved in my career, so...
Okay.
I'm just relaying what I was asked to do.
Okay. That's fine.
I'm not saying I'm for, against the project.
Okay.
I was asked to bring that up, and I did that.
Okay. So what questions does the council have? I, what they need, this application is due to the end of July, they would, this letter is important to be put in as part of that application with your approval, I don't want to sign anything to commit the city to anything without the governing body that kind of sets the ordinances for the fees and whatever, I don't, I can't do that. I mean, I don't, I don't want to get in trouble, so I ain't doing it. You guys got to tell me to do it, and then I'll do it, and you guys get in trouble.
Can I ask another question?
Just kidding. Yes, Larry? Yes.
Aaron, do you have any comments on this?
She was next.
Oh, okay.
Aaron, if you could talk very loudly or come up there so Scarlett can hear you.
Yeah, well, Donna, do you have a question first?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to ask for 10-year abatement on my pilot funds that we paid for the city.
Well, you've already, you've already done the development, so any renovations you do, you might be able to get that, you know?
We do pay pilot.
Yes.
I said, I'm sure you'll, I'm going to pilot.
Payment lieu of tax.
Yes, which is about $45,000 a year.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was just going to share that I know that these funds are extremely competitive, like you and Dr. Larry and Scarlett, I mean, if these funds are not awarded to Tel City, like we're competing against other rural Indiana communities.
Correct.
I don't know if Scarlett can hear you. Aaron, you got to talk loud, you got to turn that volume up, she probably can't...
Scarlett, the question here is that if Tel City's not awarded these funds, we're competing against other rural and small municipalities, if they're not awarded to Tel City, somebody else gets them, is that correct?
Okay. Okay, the state just released, everyone who submitted what's called a form C, which is essentially intent to apply any tax credits this year, so they just released that, and we were reviewing that earlier today, and I think 37, 38, typical, credit are coming in, and I think if they're around a third to 50% of, they receive funding, so just the additions of the odds, this year the state has prioritized rural and small cities for funding, they actually eliminated a category that you can compete in.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Scarlett, you're a little mumbled, but we're, what I call...
I think I lost her.
Scarlett.
I'm concerned it was getting interfered.
The point that she, that I wanted to make is that...
She's calling back, hang on just a second.
She's got mad.
All right, you're back, I hope.
I'm not sure how I got, or where that's at all.
Well, we heard most of it, you're just still kind of patchy back and forth, it's just because we're, you're going over the ocean.
Yeah, so the, the state has prioritized this year rural and small cities, they actually eliminated a large city category that you can compete in this year, and added point categories for rural and small areas. So we, this is a very competitive application for that reason, and because it was affected by a disaster, the fire, you received some points there. If we are unsuccessful this year in, in being awarded tax credits for this project, we would like the opportunity to seek them in 2025 to apply one more time. We have seen success in the past in putting it back together, increasing our points in a couple categories, or working to make the project even more competitive and submitting in a second time. We have been successful that way. But yeah, we would want to, we would hope for the opportunity to submit up to twice. But we do think this year we have a really, it's on, of the points that this project could earn through the state's matrix and just the general state's prioritization of projects of this kind.
Thanks, Scarlett. I just wanted to point that out, that this is probably one of our best chances at receiving some of those tax credits here, based on kind of the prioritization of small and rural communities. And then I also wanted to point out that we are going to be seeking some ready funds for this project, and in order to receive ready funds as a region, we were awarded 15 million. So to get that 15 million across all of our projects, we have to have 15 million public match. The 11 and a half million in tax credits count as public match. So if we are able to include this project for our five-county region, this will get us reinforced up the way there for our public match.
Helps tremendously for ready, for not just Perry County, but the region.
It will help us shed off a large portion of the public match that is required in order to get the 15 million.
All right. Of course, I'm going to just reiterate that, you know, in the presentation, it talks about our comprehensive plan, which is our master plan that we adopted. It highlighted affordable housing as a need, apartments as a need, redevelopment at Swiss plywood as a need. You know, we have seen significant investment as a city in that area, from paving to, you know, Blitz is bought, Swiss plywood is going to turn that into their ice cream manufacturing facility, to River Road project, to the Port Pier project. We have seen significant investment in that area, and it's only better to keep it going. And I would love to see market-rate houses built in an area too, just on the other side of Swiss plywood, that's where I would recommend either duplexes, single-family homes, town homes, that would be market rate, not tied to income, so...
You got to start somewhere, though.
You do. It's not every day you got a developer wanting to spend 14 million in your community.
The fact that the list of plans includes job creation as well, I think that that could nicely...
I think that that could nicely tie in with these housing units and someone, especially if they didn't have transportation, could potentially work and live in that area.
Okay. Council, questions, concerns, bad idea, good idea, like the project, don't like the project?
Do everything we can to get it.
It'd be nice. It'd be really nice.
Yeah, because, I mean, for the past several years, all we've heard is a need for more housing and there's some significant efforts going on as far as owner-occupied housing with Forest Canton, with the Hoosier Heights subdivision, and this would be, in my opinion, multifamily housing, additional multifamily housing is needed. We have lure of plenty of jobs available. Hate to see the people work here and then live somewhere else.
Yes. Well, the amenities this has also is nice.
Yes. Be real solid in the arm, in my opinion.
So what I need is approval from the council to sign this letter, you know?
I'll make that motion since it's in my ward.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Larry, seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 5 to 0. All right, Scarlett, I will, she's coming back to the United States tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
All right. I've got some friends of mine that's in Scotland right now too, it's like-
It's bound to be really late.
I guess I need to go to Scotland because everybody's going there.
It's beautiful, I will say, but I really appreciate you all having me remotely tonight and really appreciate the support for the project. We would absolutely love to develop this project in Tel City. I believe I'll be there Wednesday night to go to the Public Port Authority meeting, so looking forward to spending more time there locally.
All right. Thank you very much, Scarlett. Be safe traveling home.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right. I lost my agenda, so I'm, here it is. My mayor's report. My mayor's report is how excited I am about this project and really hope we can get the tax credit awarded and really bring some nice additional quality housing to our community, help increase our population, help to quality-of-life for our residents and help improve that part of town, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
All right, motion made by Phillip, seconded by Brian, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.